The Pledge of Allegiance and then jump into our RFA discussion. Could you join me?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who voted for the change, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much for joining us tonight for this lively discussion about the RFA. We'll do our roll call in the form of just going around to each person and introducing ourselves and stating what jurisdiction we're with. So probably go left to the deputy mayor.
Del Spivey, City of Bothell.
Mark Lamb, City of Bothell.
Andy Rayum, City of Bothell.
Tom Agnew, City of Bothell.
Jack Van Eaton, Snoe, Homish County, Number 10, Fire District.
Dan Slaughterfield, same.
Mark Mitchell, District 10.
Kevin Coughlin, Woodinville Fire.
Roger Collins, Woodinville Fire.
Tim Dorni, Woodinville Fire.
Eric Adman, North Shore Fire.
Tim Osgood, Nor-- or, Tim Osgood.
Freudian slip.
Which way is that hat from? Um, North Shore and Woodinville Fire.
Just pick one.
Ron Gerke, North Shore.
Dave Maron, North Shore Fire Department.
I'm Joe Beck, City Attorney for Bothell.
I'm Bob Stowe, City Manager, City of Bothell.
Great. Joshua Freed, the Mayor of the City of Bothell. Glad to be able to be here to discuss the topic that brings us all around this table to see if there is an RFA in front of us for each one of our jurisdictions that ultimately would represent many citizens within this area. So I understand each one of you would understand the Bothells' position about us, the City Manager, to kind of lay out what we discussed as a council most recently, just a few weeks ago. We do have an hour scheduled for this discussion. We'll see if we're able to keep within that, but if conversation is lively and we feel that more time is needed, then we can kind of address it at that time. But City Manager Stowe?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
First of all, we do, I want to welcome everyone, but also indicate that we have additional room at the table if any of the fire chiefs would want to join us through the discussion. Certainly, fine where you're at, too, but if you want to join us, we do have more room. But again, just wanted to simply sort of start the discussion this evening. Our council has met and talked about the RFA for many months, as all of you have. But at the last meeting, our council wanted to have an opportunity to have a face-to-face discussion with all the elected officials to talk about the benefits, the challenges and issues associated with moving forward with an RFA. And specifically, the council is interested in talking about two topics that I think have been discussed also at the RFA committee level. And one is that the city has talked about contributing the $7.5 million over a five-year period as its, what we might call its joining fee, with a portion of that amount to be used for improvements to RFA facilities that are located in Bothell. And the amount of that that would be returned back to RFA facilities in Bothell would be the subject of discussion that would be held by all the RFA participants. And the second point was that the operating costs associated with the RFA be looked at for potential reductions, and again, the amount to be determined by the RFA participants. And then the third component, of course, which you've already fulfilled, is to actually have the joint meeting here in Bothell so that it would afford you an opportunity to have that dialogue. And with that, Mayor, staff is certainly ready to address any questions that council or I think the other fire chiefs would be willing, and also to address issues and questions that come up amongst all the participants.
Excellent. Thank you so much, City Manager. Does anybody want to jump in with any comments or questions at this point? Be the first to the table, sir.
I just have, this is Dave Maron. I just have one comment. We formed this committee under the RFA Planning Committee Washington State laws, but really, it's in a committee to find a path to consolidating the department. So when we say RFA, that's one option, and there are other options, and I just want to make that point from the beginning.
Well, we do have listening public. Do you want to explain the other options for those who might be listening?
Well, there's two primary ones, and I suppose if you were innovative, you could find some more, but one would be to contract for services. Any one of the agencies contacting with, contracting with any of the others. And the second one would be an annexation to a fire district. And essentially, they would get you to the same place.
Okay. Many years ago, we took that up as a council with the district, and something I was supportive, but that was about eight years ago. Then the RFA discussion started taking over a little bit more, and so we find ourselves here today. Roger, do you want to make sure that the microphone's on?
Sorry. That discussion was with Snow 10 or with 7?
It was more in general with our own fire department, talking about creating a fire district.
Oh, oh. Gotcha.
Yep. Do you want to jump in? Or Tom?
Well, I think we're having the meeting here to try to get some questions that are answered and get a little bit more guidance in the direction that we need to go. I think for the last two years, over two years, we've been at these discussions and having these discussions and forming an RFA or at least looking at viable options to creating a better fire department. All of us have great fire departments at our disposal at this point in time. We just would like to look at financially what would be the best options for these departments in moving forward and what would be best for the citizens. It's been an interesting progression as far as I'm concerned. My background was in the fire service, and you put the wet stuff on the red stuff, or you open the airway and things got better, things didn't. So it was instant gratification. I've never been at a committee where I've been there for two and a half years and we really haven't moved forward yet. So at times, it's very educational. At times, for me, it's a little frustrating, and I know at times for you, the other members, it's been a little frustrating. The city moves a little slower than districts do, and thanks for putting up with us, and let's have a lively discussion tonight.
Great. Councilmember Lamb?
So I actually made the motion that brought about this meeting tonight, and the reason that I did that was twofold. One is I feel that an RFA is an idea that is worth pursuing, and I think it's something that our citizens need to have an understanding of, and I think it's something that we, as elected officials, need to sit down and have the opportunity to meet and discuss together. The second purpose for that and the reason that I wanted to have us all here tonight around the same table was I understood that there was, if not miscommunication, maybe misunderstanding between the different parties that were involved here. And I think that at the end of the day, all of us are elected representatives who want the best things for the people who've elected us, and I think that we believe in providing a high quality of service on fire to the people, to our constituents. And I felt like if this process is going to move forward, it's going to require kind of an open airing amongst the elected officials who will make that decision ultimately. But equally important, I think it requires that conversation to take place in an open place. I think it requires it to take place in a place where our community, the citizens of Bothell, and the various citizens of the constituencies that you represent have an opportunity to observe and participate in that process. And I know that the RFA committee has been hard at work, and I know that the individuals from Bothell that we appointed to that committee have been hard at work, and I know that the individuals who are appointed from the other jurisdictions have been working hard and working in good faith to try to move this process forward. I take and appreciate Councilmember Agnew's remarks that it hasn't maybe moved forward as quickly as some might like, but I think we're now at a point in this process where we need to invite the public into it, and I think we need to have an open discussion with our citizens about what the best path forward is for each of the people that we represent and each of the communities that we represent. I read the report that was prepared on the RFA several times, and I have looked forward to the opportunity tonight to engage with each of the different jurisdictions about what you would like to see from that. And I guess that's my question to each of you is what is it that, what do the people that you represent want to see at the end of this process? What are the values that they want to see? What's the service level they want to see, and what's the taxation level that they want to see? Because ultimately, if we're going to come to an agreement, that's going to be the essence of it, is what is it going to mean to the people in Bothell? What is it going to mean to the people who are in the North Shore Fire District and the Woodinville Fire District and Fire District 10? Is it going to be an improvement from their status quo to enter into an RFA? And I think if the answer for all of those jurisdictions is a yes, then I think we have a viable path forward, and I think all of us as elected officials should put our heads together, roll up our sleeves, and make that happen. If the answer to that for an individual jurisdiction is no, then that may not be the case. And I think that's what I'm hoping we can have tonight, is an honest dialogue about what that looks like. And I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, that if anybody in the public tonight wants to participate or wants to comment in the same manner that we have at our Bothell City Council meeting, that we allow them to do that as well.
Okay, thank you. Others wish to comment? Does anybody have any comments? The city council passed, I think it was basically six to one. Councilmember Rayum had to leave early, but stated public support of moving forward. It was six to one. With the offer that's on the table, I think it was 7.5 over five years. I've not heard back a response to that directly, and I don't know if the commissioners wish to discuss that and your thoughts, your feelings. Is that a good starting ground? What do you, where do you stand? Roger's directing it to somebody over here. Tim?
Well, I'd like to back up a little bit.
Sure.
And say first, thanks for the invite. It's great to be here and talk about this in a larger group. I would say that the public has been invited all along, and there's been ample opportunity for the public to partake in the discussions that we've had to this point. On the question of the seven and a half, that, it's kind of interesting how we, how that number kind of came to the top of the heap. There's no, there's no equation that goes through it. We're sitting here with two different models from a financing standpoint of how fire is funded. From the district's standpoint, we have a very easy task because that's all that we do. So our entire revenue stream and our entire budget goes to fire. And we have a requirement to hold some fairly substantial capital reserves because we only get revenue twice per year. So we've accumulated both North Shore and Woodinville, and to the similar extent, 10 has some very nice reserve funding that is available to throw into the RFA, and it's really what allows the RFA model to work, is to have that funding in place at day one. So the idea here, I think, might have been referred to as a fee. It's not really a fee. It's just a capital evening fund that we would like to see capital brought to the table somewhat in par with what the other agencies are bringing to the startup process. So I don't want it to be called a fee because it's not, no one's charging a fee. It's a capital contribution. So, and I think one of the challenges that we have is with the council's ask for a portion of those funds to be brought back specifically to the geographic area of the city. I think that's a hard path to start down because then you start looking around. Every jurisdiction has their own shortcomings and their own needs. In Woodinville, we have a gap in coverage in our southwestern part of the district. So it's hard to say we're going to come together, we're going to pull all our funds into this pot, but we're going to start pulling out specific funds and directing them to parts of the now RFA in its own right. So I would, we understand that Bothell's is anxious to have those capital funds spent back in the city, but they're going to get spent where they need to be spent. And I don't want to go down the path of talking about, you know, whose roofs are in the better shape or who needs a paint job, but I assure you that no matter how we come together as a group, those capital funds will be spent on the most appropriate needs that come up. And I think to have to earmark those going in is probably not a fair thing from everyone's I, my suspicion is that a good portion of those funds will probably be spent back in the city here because there are a number of things that need to happen to, you know, the physical plan, so.
Well, just like you, we represent our certain areas in our districts for us, the citizens of Bothell, right? And so this ultimately would have to go, be passed by the citizens of Bothell. We would like, personally, I'd like to see a majority of the citizens of Bothell pass it. If they're going to be taxed, they should be able to have that say. But for a long time, for many years on council, I heard that there was a great need for a south station. That coincides with what I'm hearing in the southwestern portion of the District of Woodinville, there is a need as well. Have you analyzed, is there a joint station that could be placed there that could satisfy what you see has a potential service issue and what we see as a service issue at South Bothell?
Well, we went through a station siting study, and I guess the good news in that was that the current mix is pretty well-placed, but it does leave some gaps. I just met with the City of Kirkland because they have similar issues on their northern boundaries. So it seems like there's this band across our northern zone and their, or our southern zone and Kirkland's northern zone where something needs to be done jointly there, whether that's jointly staffing stations that already exist, whether that means moving some around that already exist or adding new. And the whole idea of coming together in a regional plan is then you can start looking at the area in its entirety and not within everybody's local jurisdiction. So I think that's a study that needs to be further enhanced, and I think that's something that needs to be.
Yeah, we personally had a couple of studies that have shown over our, my 10 years and some other 12 years, that there is a need in our, in the southern portion of our city. And if it potentially, that it coincides with your need as well in Kirkland's, maybe it's not that far for the RFA collectively to go and to say, yeah, we concede that there is a need there, and that might help make an RFA more attractive to all present here at the table. If there was some commitment that could be given, that, yeah, we recognize there's a need and we could publicly state there is and actually put it in a document. Maybe we're not that far apart.
But then I would again caution you to look at just Bothell's needs on the south line because.
To not just or to just?
To not just look at.
See, and I have to as the representative, elected representative of the citizens of Bothell. That's where I have to place my interest, is in that area. So that's where maybe there's some juxtaposition of where we're sitting here and why we're around the table to see if there's a way we can come together. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Roger, could you, you made a comment earlier, and I just want to make sure the listening audience is clear that the districts have large operating reserves or capital reserves, but you never mentioned anything about operating reserves. So I just want to make sure that you do have, you know, that the listening public's aware that you're not speaking just capital reserves, you're speaking of operating reserves also.
Yes, that's true. That is true, yeah. Dave?
Mayor, one of the things I'd like to make clear is the challenge that Roger identified for North Shore on our north Vin Hill area, for Bothell, south of your city, south of the slough, and Woodinville's south area, the north Kingsgate area. The challenge is that is a narrow band that runs east-west, and none of those areas have enough calls for service to justify the expenditure required for a whole new station. I personally believe that the solution lies in our coordination with Kirkland, who are now in a station siting mode right now, but.
So you're saying the service could come from Kirkland ultimately for both those areas?
Or a state, yeah, there could be some joint station. The other thing that we do, I think is important, is while there is a deficit in that band there, it takes us longer to get there, but because of mutual aid that we all provide to each other, it is minimized because Kirkland will come north of their city to go to our calls and we'll go south of our jurisdictional boundaries or east or west to go to somebody else's calls. So I'm not sure that, it's a problem we'd like to fix, but I'm not sure it's the biggest problem we have to fix.
Okay. Commissioner Osgood?
I would jump in on, I think, when we're talking about citing a station and for jurisdictions that we're way down into the weeds where we really shouldn't be is far as we're here to determine the feasibility of an RFA and moving forward together and the benefits for them. Back originally to your question, I think the $7.5 million over five years and what is it enough, I think is what the question to Roger was initially. And I would throw in, in addition to kind of what Roger had said, the study came up with the term, it didn't come through any sort of methodology that we could hang our hats on and say, okay, seven and a half, we'll do this and it'll equal with everybody else and we're all good. It was kind of a placeholder, if you will. About a month, month and a half ago, Roger as Chair of the Planning Committee had suggested to form an ad hoc financial equity committee. I'm here to try to revive that concept because to answer your question on the seven and a half over five, I believe our next step is to do a couple things. It's either to say, are we in for the RFA or not? And then if it's so, then we need to go back and reevaluate all the financials. They're two years old now, so all of our financials are going to be off a little bit. But we need to move forward under the fair and equitable for everybody methodology to determine how much does the City of Bothell need to do? How much does North Shore have to contribute? How much does Woodinville have to contribute? Fair, equitable, hopefully some sort of methodology that stands the mathematical process, the scientific process, takes into account the roofs on the buildings and everything. And until that work is actually done in a very strong matter, we don't know. I don't know. I can't sit and tell you that, well, seven and a half over five, yeah, that gets you in there. I don't know. It could be more, and then it could be less. Don't know. But until that body of work is done, we aren't going to know. I think that that is one of our next steps if we should choose to move forward. And I think that the Planning Committee and the jurisdictions that are at the table, I think we have the ability to do that.
How long does that take, do you think?
I think if we focused our staff down to doing that, I think that they could pull that together 60 to 90 days. And I know the holidays are in there, so you could twist my arm a little bit. But it shouldn't take too long because we have some basic financials, but they do need to be updated because the original financials included in the study are stale. And so moving forward to 2016, it's a little bit different. We need to kind of figure out what what is. But what is for Bothell is going to be the same for Snow 10, is going to be the same for North Shore, it's going to be the same for Woodinville. That we need to shake hands on or else we don't really have a need to be here because it can't be city leveraging against fire district, fire district leveraging against fire district. It doesn't work. You come together on an equal footing, an equal partnership, and everything that's done needs to be that way.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
So, you know, at the beginning, what I said was, I think that people, each of us represents our own jurisdiction and we have to, you know, the deal has to make sense. And my understanding, when I made the motion to say, you know, the seven and a half over five years, is that that was a precondition of the other jurisdictions to continue discussions. You said that particularly in North Shore said, look, unless you do that, the RFA discussion is dead, and that that is a bar that you have to clear or else we're not really interested in continuing our conversation with Bothell. That's a little bit different than what I'm hearing tonight, which is that was sort of like a floor and not a ceiling, and now we need to go back and say, was that, you know, what would that amount ultimately be? That now that we've got you at seven and a half over five years, it may be more than that, or it may be something that, or it may be, I guess, conceivably less than that. And ultimately, we're not going to be equal. I mean, every jurisdiction is not, we're not turning to fire districts that don't have the same reserves and saying, you know what, everybody, if you have 11 million and another has nine, you're not looking to the other fire district and saying, you need to bring in 11. We're saying, you know, we want to have a system at the end of the day that makes sense. And I think what, you know, to your point, Commissioner Collins, we have to be able to go to our citizens and say, you know what, this system may cost more, but ultimately, your service is going to be better than it is with a status quo. And if we can't say that, we're not going to do it because it's not, I mean, nobody in Bothell is going to say, yeah, I'd like to have a more expensive system that isn't going to provide me a better service. I think that when we talk about a south station or in terms of cost or distance, that, you know, it's not to me so much that the station has to be in Bothell, but it's that we have to say the system as a whole is going to be better. I have to be able to look at my constituents honestly in the eye and say, you know what, the system will be better for you, not just tomorrow, but long-term than it is today. And I think that's the foundation that we need to start from. I mean, if we, if we literally, if the next step is, well, you've now agreed to seven and a half over five years, and now we need to look back and say, maybe that should be more, to me is the next step, if I'm a citizen of Bothell, I would say I'd like the next step to be like, does this make sense for me from a service standpoint, and does it make sense for me from a cost standpoint? Because that's the argument ultimately that we have to take to our constituents and say, we want you to vote, and we want a majority of you to vote for this system. And unless we can do that, you know, I can't speak to how a council will do it, but I mean, fundamentally, if I'm a citizen of Bothell, if I'm not, if I'm going to be paying more, it's got to be a better system.
I would agree with that. I would, I would ask you to consider as an elected and all of the electeds at the table right now, if we choose to blow the whole thing up and just continue on the way we're doing, that is the most expensive option for all of our citizens in the whole area, considering what is in front of them right now. To stay our own departments, that's the most expensive option to provide service. That's the way we've been doing it. That's, we have three different labor contracts. We've got Snow 10 that they've come in here, too. They've got their part to this as well. But to stay our own agencies, employ three different fire chiefs, the administrative staff, to have 20 some odd electeds making decisions where it would be streamlined staff, to have twenty some odd electeds making decisions where it would be streamlined down to probably of seven to handle this, that's the most expensive option to choose is to stay the same. Coming together is going to reduce duplicity in the government. The public will support that. They will say, why, why should we have three fire chiefs in this small area? Bellevue, Seattle, they have multiple, I mean, twice and three times the size and they only have one fire chief.
Well, let me ask you this. If, if that isn't, let's say you say, you know what, we're going to reduce duplicity and we're going to have better service, then if I'm a citizen of Bothell, maybe like, why is that going to cost me more?
It may, you're a citizen in Bothell, it may, just I'm relying on the data that we have in the study and personal knowledge in the area. It may be the fact for the citizens in Bothell, they're going to end up paying more regardless of what they do. But I know, speaking for Woodinville and the taxpayers there, their cost is going to be staying basically the same, and I would reckon that it'll get lower as time goes on. Probably the same or very similar with North Shore. Snow Ten entering into it, I, they, my understanding is they've been paying pretty low as it is. It may come up a bit, but the, the, I got it here, if you'll just hear me out here, maybe this will really get you the, this is what I came up with at home today. Any sustained reduction in operational costs is a great thing for the taxpayer. Any opportunity to improve the operational readiness and training of personnel is a great thing for the taxpayer. Any opportunity to reduce duplication of efforts and the size of governing bodies is a great thing for the taxpayers. More local oversight over a larger geographical area is a great thing for the taxpayers. Any opportunity to reduce response times and improve service levels is a good thing for the taxpayers. If the RFA doesn't happen, all the factually based opportunities will be lost.
So, I mean, and I, I mean, facially, I accept that what you, what you just said is true. I guess what I'm saying is that if we go, if you're saying the next step is to examine what Bothell's buy-in is, I would argue that the next step should be to demonstrate empirically exactly what you just said. And if you can go in and say...
We would, we would, through the Equity Committee, in my belief, is that's where it needs to happen. And this isn't, this isn't an opportunity to have the districts gang up on Bothell. This is a fair partnership thing, looking at everybody's financials, real-time, same desk, all right, these are the numbers, we got this, all right. Now, we're going to just say the cost of a firefighter position is X.
And that's looking at a reduction in operating costs as well?
Yes. That's going to, that's going to place the value for what every agency has right now and going forward. And, and if it ends up that, all right, so Woodinville's here, North Shore's here, Bothell's here, then there'll be an equalization process to get everybody in an equal form or fashion. So it goes back to the seven-five over five. After this process and this work is completed, then you should have a very concrete succinct figure of what it's going to take for everybody. One of the things that we, we had also is North Shore's Training Center and the payoff of that. That's something that needs to be factored in here. We all would, we're using it now, we're going to use it in the future as a member of an RFA, so that's a legitimate cost. And again, it really hasn't been factored in the way it needs to be and, and how to retire that debt for them. But that, that's all in the body of work that needs to be completed before we can really say for certain, here's how much money everybody needs to bring in.
Yeah. I want to jump to Mr. Dorni here just a second. I heard you say reduces duplicity, but we've heard here at the council as it come back from the committee, that staffing will not be reduced, will actually maintain the same over time. But maybe in ten years, as retirement occurs, there will be a reduction. But as we're entering the RFA, there will be no immediate reduction. So maybe you could speak to duplicity and efficiency, Mr. Collins?
Can I, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
That's one of the misconceptions that are, that is floating around. There's no way you can bring all of these agencies together and keep the staff that's in, in, in place and get any economies out of the process. It's just not possible. So I, 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 I think that notion has, has to be taken off. If, if, if our, if our job is to figure out a way to have all the agencies come together with, with the same staffing and doing the same thing that they're, that they're doing today, there's, there's no opportunity to lower costs. It, it, and if, and if that's, if that's a requirement placed upon this, this group, then we're, then we're done.
If what's a requirement?
That, 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 that the staffing has, that no one loses their, their jobs is...
Okay, that's what we've heard here on our council.
And that, and that's not, that's not, that's not true.
Not the case. That's interesting. Mr. Dorni?
Well, just to start, in a more simplistic way of saying this, I believe, Councilman Lamb, you're, if you want a south Bothell station, you're either going to build it yourself, provide the money to build it and staff it yourself, or you're going to be a part of a larger group that's going to buy this station. So to me, that's, that's the long-term.
So, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but you said you called me out by name. I just wanted to say, I'm not saying that we necessarily need, I mean, I think what my comment was is if those citizens get better service, whether the station is in Kenmore, Bothell, or Woodinville, those citizens would get better service. I think what I said was, I need to be able to go to the people who live in Bothell and say, you're going to get better service. That doesn't necessarily mean the station would be in Bothell, and I think you're right. If we wanted a south Bothell station, we would need to build ourselves, or we could have an agreement with Kirkland to provide the same kind of, you know, emergent aid or reciprocal aid that we would have, we would have with an RFA.
And how long have you been thinking about a south station?
Probably as long as, or longer than we've been thinking about an RFA.
Yeah. And if you have an RFA, then I think things would move, move forward. I think that's the benefit. That's what, that's what number two of your criteria. And, and I would back up a little bit and say on this...
Sir, can you do me a favor, just push the button there, make sure the green light's on? Perfect, thank you. I guess he was thinking, maybe we're not plugged in?
I think the goal tonight, if we want to take at least a little step forward, is, is to get, if, is to decide whether we're going to move forward with what you've countered to this group and, and put an empirical number on it. Because trying to vote on something that doesn't have an empirical number is the reason that we're one year behind, in my opinion. And everybody here can tell me if I'm wrong, but we did, we hired a consultant. A consultant came back, they threw some numbers on the table. And then, the way I see this, Bothell challenged the numbers relative to their city. And what kind of happened then was Bothell was kind of getting beat up. I would turn it around and say, the people that ought to be beat up is the RFA committee, and I'm one of the members. We should have said at that time, Bothell, either accept that number or go to the, help me out, the people that put the...
Yes.
The consultant?
Yes, CI. Go to them and, and challenge their figures, and if you can convince them to bring another number to us, then, then we'll do that. But we played cat and mouse with that figure now for a year. And if there's people sitting at this table that really want an RFA, it's a shame that that happened. So if you, so I'm saying, if you want the RFA to move forward, we've got, there's got to be something, there has to be a vote. We can sit here and have a nice, warm and fuzzy talk tonight and go back and, and say, well, gee, I wonder what, what we've got to do, what we've got to promise, Councilman Lamb, so that he can feel comfortable with his constituents, because we're all in the same barrel there.
But I, I don't, to be clear, I mean, the City of Bothell was asked to produce a number, and we originally didn't, and I think it's the number that you're referring to, the seven-point-five over five years, and we ultimately acquiesced to that number.
Well, that took about a year to do it, but you did. But, but you still have strings attached.
Well...
You, you want, you want us to commit to, as I understand it, a, right now, it's just a, it's a fuzzy, you're chasing the bull. And, and, you know, what's, what is it that you want?
And I, and I'm, when I'm in court, I always like it when the judge asks the hardest question, and I'm glad that you asked that question, because that, I think, is the crux of the issue, is you said, well, you're putting a string on that number because you're saying some of it has to come back to Bothell. Commissioner Collins said a moment ago that, of course, some of that money is going to come back to Bothell. Of course, we know the condition of the Bothell stations, and it's unquestionable that some of that seven-point-five million would be returned to the City of Bothell.
But it's not, not an empirical number, what you're looking for. Because I would be very comfortable to look you or anybody in the eye and say that if we, if we're, if we are an RFA tomorrow, and if in fact, one of the Bothell stations is the worst station of the RFA, it's the one that's going to get the attention.
And I think that's...
Now, can I tell you it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars, or a million dollars, or two million dollars? I don't know.
And I think ultimately, that's the kind of, that's the essence of the quandary that we're in, is that at any given moment, I, I think, I believe you, I mean, you say like, hey, if we, if we became an RFA tomorrow, I think, I have no doubt that the RFA committee would sit down and say, I've looked at all the stations and Bothell, you need some work. Like, we're, we're going to be sending some money your way to improve those stations. Whether that would be in the form of a new station or rehabilitating existing stations, I wouldn't speculate, but I don't have any question about that. And I think that the problem is, on your side of the table, you're like, well, Bothell, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you trust that? If you know that to be the case, why, you know, you should, you should just accept that. But when I have to go to my constituents and I have to say, you know what, people in Woodinville and people in North Shore are going to be paying the same or lower taxes, and you are going to be paying higher taxes, but, you know, we, we, we couldn't even secure any commitment from the RFA committee that any of that, that one dollar of that money was coming back into the City of Bothell, I think you, you know, I mean, like, I understand from your side of the table, your quandary is, you're like, we have great reserves, Bothell has zero reserves. If we came into an agreement where Bothell came into this situation and didn't bring anything to the table, we would look pretty foolish to our constituents, saying, we welcome Bothell to the table with their zero reserves. That would be a bad deal.
We have fifteen percent reserves.
Yeah. I, I think our, as a city, I, I think our, similarly, I think for my constituents, if I go to them and say, you know what, it's, it's, it's a close call, but you need to understand some things. You need to understand our fire department needs investment moving forward. We're better off doing that collectively than individually. Here are the costs individually, your costs are going to go up. And by the way, the RFA committee has said, we're not promising you five cents, but trust us, we'll take care of Bothell. I think I'd look pretty foolish too. So I, I mean, I, I'm trying to put myself in your seat and understand your perspective, and I think that's why we came around with a seven and a half and five years. And I guess I would just invite you to do, to understand the situation that we're in in the City of Bothell as well.
Sorry, Jim. Would it, would it be adequate then to, to say that, that if, if we move forward with some type of regionalization process, that there will be investment back into the City of Bothell through whatever process that, that we, we use? For us, what, what we're concerned about is the, I guess, the appearance that you're asking for, how much of the seven-point-five is coming back? And that gets, gets to Tim's thoughts, that we, we don't know what the number is, because we, we haven't gone that far into the weeds to, to figure out exactly where, where the next capital dollar should be, be spent. So it, it, it has to be a little bit of, trust us. I mean, there, there's, there, the Bothell facilities are, are not going to be left off of the, the, the list when capital improvements come, come around.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew? And then, sir, I can't see your name.
Coflin.
Coflin, thank you. After Tom.
You know, I, I don't know if we're going to come up with a number. I, I think we could come up with a word. And the word that I would come up with would be disproportionate. I think a disproportionate amount of the funds are going to go to the City of Bothell for Bothell improvements. And, and I'm not saying that because Bothell has the, the stations that need it the most. Well, yes, I am. Bothell has the stations that need it the most. And, and like Chief Dorni said, what's going to happen is the RFA is going to look at all the stations and which one need upkeep, which ones need to be remodeled, which ones have a roof that leaks or just needs to be painted, they're, they're going to do that. So his, a disproportionate amount of that funding will be coming back to Bothell.
Another angle maybe on that is you just come with a very low number that we can all swallow and move forward, knowing that we're probably going to pay more than that.
Well, this has been, so far, very education. We find yourself forty-five minutes in, so just keeping track of time. As I, before I came to this meeting, I was hearing that no staffing would change, we wouldn't be having anybody leave our staffing collectively. It would happen through retirement over time. So those efficiencies weren't immediately known. Tonight, I'm hearing that those efficiencies could be immediately known. Also heard that there was no need for a south fire station. Now, it's not, now helpful to hear potentially there could be. And Mr. Dorni, you said that we are the best people in the RFA to find and fund a south station. That's encouraging. I've not heard that before. So that's all very positive. Mr. Coflin, I wonder if anybody from Fire District Ten would like to speak after him as well? We haven't heard from them, so. No, you first, absolutely.
I'll yield to Fire District Ten if they wish to really quiet over here.
No, you raised your hand.
I will jump in. A couple of things. I think that, that, I got a little bit lost in Commissioner Osgood's tracking there, but I think really what, what his intention was and what we were charged with is this quote-unquote ad hoc financial committee that I tried my darndest to get out of, was to review the financial plan to see if there are additional cost savings there. What the Bothell contribution does, as I understand it, was it brings us to a point where we will have fully funded reserves from day one. And that's very important to the fire district mentality, that we have, we have money in the bank because of the way we're funded and the way we collect our funds. The fully funded reserve gives us the opportunity to go out and start without having to build a reserve to go out and do operational things. We can give it to the white shirts to go out and, and run a fire department. We can put the wet stuff on the whites, or the red stuff. Do you guys still do that, put the red, the wet stuff on the red stuff?
The wet stuff on the red stuff.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll get it right. I'm not a, I'm not a fire guy. The station study that was done showed that despite the, the, the differences of the districts and of the departments, that our fire chiefs collectively over the last forty or fifty years did a pretty darn good job of guessing where the station should be. Did we hit them all right? No, we, we, we missed a couple. The sweet spot probably would be a, a station in the south end, Kingsgate, Brickyard Park and Ride, someplace in that kind of target area might be a great station. But what that would really entail is, is probably the relocation of Station Forty-two. Because that gets the station out of the downtown area, out of that crazy traffic grid. It's only crazy twice a day, morning and night. But it makes, makes things a little bit different at that point, but it's something that would have to be studied further in-depth to do. I think that the first charge, and it's kind of the middle of the three, that, that your letter to the, the RFA committee said is, is that you were willing to commit to the seven-point-five million dollars. And personally, I want to thank your entire council for doing that. That was, that was very good. The, the joint meeting, we pulled that one off, and that's kind of surprising that we're able to do this with, you've got all that construction out there. It's hard parking in the city. But the review for the cost savings, that's something that, that, well, we'd kind of thought about it in the back of our mind, we've got this great financial model, and yes, now we can rerun all those numbers. We can plug everything in and say, okay, this is the Bothell number. Where do we go from here? What does it look like? Can we achieve cost savings? Beats the heck out of me, and I'm, I'm a numbers guy eight hours a day. But I, I can't say with any certainty that we're going to have anything if something's going to come up different. But are we going to see dramatic savings from the get-go on this? Surprisingly not. We have some personnel staffing that over time will, will adjust some things because we don't need, we don't need to be top-heavy in leadership, we don't need to have a huge administration to, to run a, an eight-station fire department. One of the things that we get when you have the RFA, when you have this consolidation, is that you get sustainability, because you have a larger area to draw from so that you can build sustainable labor contracts, which are the, the big driver in a, in a fire department. We will all face the, the... We will all face the, the, the future, some of us sooner than others, of an unsustainable labor contract. And that's bad news for everybody. It's bad news mostly for our taxpayers. Why are the Bothell City taxpayers going to pay more? Primarily because of the way the city funds city government. We have but two sources, the property tax and the benefit charge. The city has other funds to draw on. So, while you're, you're getting that same monies from your, your taxpayers, you're getting it from different sources. There might be a, a utility tax, or a cable TV tax, or a, whatever other taxes cities or general government can, can offer to their citizens to, besides the property tax. You get a sales tax. You may have a real estate tax. I don't know if there'd be a beer tax at McMenamins when it opens up.
By the way, it's, it's open Thursday. Invite you all to come and spend your, spend your hard-earned money in Bothell.
But some of these things, we're going to, we're going to be on a voyage of discovery, even though that was the other day, to find these things, to find if there are additional savings out there. Are there? I suspect there are. Can I pinpoint them? No, we have to go through the exercise to, to find that out. Can we do it in 90 days? If Commissioner Osgood wishes to do it in 90 days, more power to you. Of course, you only work eight, eight days out of the month, so you can probably do this one.
Ooh.
But I, I think we can, we can hit all those things. And Councilmember Lamb, you'd made early on, and I, I hope you'd written it down, because I only got two out of the three. You'd asked for three items, value, service level, and I didn't write down, I didn't get the third item that you'd mentioned. This is way back in the, probably about 10 minutes after six. When, kind of in your opening statement, you'd, you'd talked about the open meeting and, and meeting with, so the constituency of the citizens of Bothell.
I think the third was tax, was the level of taxation. And I think for, for your constituents and for North Shore, the question is answered. I think it's...
Yeah, and I, I think it's, it's obvious to all of us here that the level of taxation for the city of Bothell residents is going to go up. Because we're going to extract a portion of the fire department, the, the tax value of the fire department, out of the city coffers, if you will. But it's simply going to go and be taken out of a different line on their property taxes. So, is there be a tax impact? Yeah, I think there is. A lot of it may depend on that, if you will, that freed-up money. And I won't call it free money, because no money is free, but that freed-up money that used to fund the fire department, it's up to the, what the city council is going to do with that money, or return it to the, to the citizens and lower city taxes to make up for the, for the fire district tax. You're going to provide different enhanced, improved services in, in other areas. I know there's lots of things on a, on a city's plate, if you will, of, of improvements they want to do within the city that could be done with that, that freed-up money. So, some of that is a conversation that I can't, I can't tell. I don't know how much that's going to free it. And I can't tell your citizens that it's the right thing to do, because it's, it's your money that you have to work with, not your taxpayer's.
That's exactly our struggle. And just roughly, we've heard from our fire department, some needs if we stay as a, as a, with our own fire department, we need probably $600,000 more a year to get to a certain level, some needs that are there. So, that's around $30 for a $350,000 home. With an RFA, we're looking at over $200,000 for a $350,000 home and an increase. So, those are why we have to really understand what is provided back to the citizens for them to really comprehend if this is something good. So, you can see there's $170 metrics at least, maybe $200 difference of what we have to explain for just a $350,000 homes, let alone 700,000 or more. But we understand our dilemma. Mr. Admin, and then I think you raise your hand next, and then, sir?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the, the origin of the 7.5 million. It's been under discussion as well.
Can I interrupt you for a second? It was $30 for 350,000 and then $200, not 200,000. Floridian slip, or whatever you want to call that.
What was that exactly?
$30 additional to cover $600,000 in additional expenses per our fire district, and then $200 to $220 more for an RFA, for $350,000 valued home.
But that's assuming that there's no taxation change within the city. If, if the city of Bothell doesn't adjust any of their taxes, then the increase would be $200 a year to that.
$220 for an RFA.
Just to clarify, it does, it does include a reduction in property tax. It does include a amount associated with the loss of revenue from District 10, the equivalent amount that is the loss, because we no longer have a contract. And it also includes a small amount, actually includes two other amounts. It includes another amount, what we call the stabilization fund, which is a very small, I think 11 cents per thousand of assessed valuation, because we'd be giving up so much property tax. That's the one stabilizing revenue source that we have. But, and finally, it also includes our taxpayers paying that 7.5 million dollars over a five-year period. And so, all of that rolled in is the $220 that an RFA would cost Bothell residents, excluding the cost of any capital operations of a South End Fire Station, or operating costs of the South End Fire Station, since that's not in the, the proposed RFA study. I mean, it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison, but that's how we arrived at $222 for a $350,000 home, obviously adjusted with the benefit charge for businesses versus $32 for the city of Bothell fully funding its fire department. And a fully funded fire department, in our view, is simply taking our fire chief's proposal of what, if we had the money, and it was something like $680,000 is what the request was, to fully fund the Bothell Fire Department. We just simply equated that to a tax levy amount, which would be $32 per $350,000 of a home value.
Okay, so that's $222, and I don't know that it's exactly that amount. It might be a little bit different.
$220.
We'll, we'll, we'll use the $220 as kind of a, a benchmark right now. The citizens in, in Woodenville Fire and North Shore Fire are already paying that.
No, this is an additional amount.
Well, but that's what they're paying just for their, for their fire protection right now. So, there's where that, that, as Councilmember Agnew said, that's the disproportionate share that's there now, that would, would level that out for the fire service, but it doesn't account for the other tax issues that would be going on.
This is, the $220 is an additional property tax that the city of Bothell residents would pay in order to belong to an RFA. It's inclusive of an RFA charge, plus those other numbers that I mentioned, which includes the revenue stabilization, the lost revenue associated with District 10, and then the city implementing a levy, a property tax levy, in order to pay the 7.5 million over five years.
But I, but I think what's important there is that, that's, that's your relative difference in taxation. It's not the cost of fire service, because...
No, no, our only point was for, because we're looking at this from the perspective of what our residents will pay. And clearly, that's the question. I agree with all of the comments about efficiencies and, and the value and the benefits that Bothell residents pay. I think our council is struggling with, at what cost is that, should that be pursued? Versus the cost of simply increasing our own fire department budget to the equivalent standard of what an RFA would provide. And right now, our numbers are indicating that there's a big disparity between a fully funded department for Bothell versus going to an RFA.
And I think...
So, I think that's what the mayor was commenting on. That's all I was responding on.
And I interrupted Commissioner Admin.
Thank you. That's fine. That was a very interesting discussion. So, so just to clarify, so it sounds like the, the end result of that discussion is you're saying that essentially you could satisfy the unmet needs of the fire department budget within Bothell status quo for $30 a year on a $350,000 home versus $222 with the RFA?
I think the numbers, the gap is, becomes reduced when Bothell starts considering the South Station capital costs and the South Station operating costs. But the same would be true, although lesser degree, because it's spread out amongst the larger area for the RFA to consider a South Station or operating cost in the South. So, that's just simply operating costs associated with, with providing fire service.
Okay. Well, that wasn't, that wasn't my full comment. I wanted to just kind of comment on this $7.5 million that's been discussed so much, and then just kind of offer some general comments on where I see the process right now. So, just to give some explanation on this $7.5 million. So, essentially, the RFA planning committee originally put together a finance committee, subcommittee, and they adopted a, a philosophy of funding operating expenses and reserves. And they determined that was going to take X amount of dollars to make that work. And then they looked at how much money the fire districts were going to be contributing, each of which was going to be contributing more on the order of 11 or 12 million dollars each. And then the delta between that and what was needed is what remained, was essentially the $7.5 million to be adequately funded on day one. So, that's not actually a proportionate contribution relative to the assessed value or area of Bothell. That was just the difference between what was being contributed and what was needed. So, that's my comment on the 7.5. With regards to where we are right now, I think overall, it seems like there's a shared vision that a regional fire department makes the most sense in terms of providing effective fire services. But what we lack right now is a shared vision of exactly how to get there. So, I've heard within the Bothell City Council, they've got questions on cost versus benefits. You're looking at, would it cost you $30 versus $222? You know, I think that there's, so the Bothell City Council obviously has some questions. The North Shore commissioners are not 100% unified on this right now and have some questions as well. There was a memo that we drafted back in April to the overall RFA planning committee, where we outlined a number of different issues. And I think in order for the North Shore Commission to get on board with an RFA, that set of issues would need to be worked through. So, that's a, a bit of a challenge to the shared vision right now. I know that there's some individual commissioners, I don't know how widespread the, the support is for it, who would like to explore other options, including contract for service, and that's been somewhat controversial. So, there's some different ideas of how to get to regionalization. So far, everybody seems to think that it's a good idea in general. And as we mentioned, there's a number of options for considering. A new organization, an RFA, would kind of bring everybody in on an equal playing field. Contracting, annexations, and mergers would have some advantages of reversibility, but would also have some disadvantages of carrying on with an existing model. I think what we could achieve with regionalization would, area-wide, we would end up with a stronger, more effective fire department. Bothell would end up with a sustainable funding mechanism. Plus, I think a side benefit to Bothell essentially is that even though Bothell is going to be paying this additional tax revenue, I think in reality, Bothell's going to get some increased capacity because of what they're not having to pay for anymore, as well as they're going to have a sustainable funding mechanism, and they're also going to be able to participate in an effective regional fire department. From the standpoint of North Shore and Woodenville, we're looking at potentially some, a lower annual cost, maybe some stronger divisions within the fire department, ability to do more, some service enhancements, some shared risks. There's some potential challenges and drawbacks I see right now. Number one is this ability to get a shared vision on what is the model. Bothell has some individual challenges, I think, which is that there is a likelihood of some administrative, primarily administrative staffing cuts at some point relatively shortly after the combination would occur, and the question is how soon would that happen? Another challenge for Bothell is kind of the buy-in for the Bothell taxpayers. In the other jurisdictions, everybody's already bought in, and they're already paying into that model. To kind of get to that place where you're part of that sustainable funding mechanism, there's kind of an initial buy-in cost, and that's really what some of this discussion's about. Another challenge is that with the additional capital needs that were identified, you know, Commissioner Osgood talked about needing to redo the model. And I don't see that we need to redo the whole model to say, okay, Bothell, we said 7.5, and now we're saying 10. But I think we do need to rerun the model with our newly identified capital needs and say, what are we looking at as an overall cost to turn, to come up with our relative dollar figures? And, you know, there's a couple of other challenges. One is there's a fatigue factor. We've been at this for two-plus years, and there's a certain sense of, you know, it's fish or cut bait. Let's either move on with this thing or move on with our lives. And there's, it's going to be a lot of work to work through all these issues. So, personally, and this is just me speaking personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the whole board, I think it's worth pursuing the RFA option. But it's going to be a lot of work to get there, and, and we do have some challenges to overcome.
Great, thank you. Hopefully, everybody has time for, we're already at our hour. I'd like to see if you're willing to stay for another 15, 20 minutes or so. Commissioner Moran?
Yeah. I will echo what Erica said about the challenges, but I also want to echo the fact that the one thing I've not heard in through this whole process is that regionalization is not a good thing. And so, I'd, I'd like to ask the question, why consolidate? And I use the term consolidate because the end goal is just to get to a department that is one, that has the same policies and procedures, the same administration, the same training standards, the same standards for stations, equipment, and the same funding model across the region. One of the things that, that this study demonstrated is that we're a bit unique in that the reason RFAs and consolidations have failed in other areas is because they have a disparity in tax evaluation. So, you have, for example, when Snow One and Edmonds and Muckelteo tried to form a consolidated department, Edmonds assessed valuation so much higher, they felt they were subsidizing Mount Lake Terrace and the suburb, the rural areas of Snow One, and it wasn't equitable. We have pretty much a, a good equitable model across the board here in how, how our AV is represented. There are economies of scale. One fire chief is just an example. But we also will be a larger department, and because of state law that has binding arbitration for firefighters, and that's there because we don't want to have firefighters go on strike. We kind of need them to be all the time. So, there's an alternative way to resolve contract disputes if we have to go there. We'll be in a, a larger comparable group, which is typically paid a little bit more. But the study shows that that cost can be assimilated without, I think, a great deal of pain. Right now, we operate effectively because of the goodwill of our surrounding agencies. We use extensively mutual aid. North Shore goes into Bothell many more times than Bothell comes in, into North Shore. That's okay with us, because we're on the same team. However, I've watched these relationships ebb and flow, and we had, for example, about eight years ago, we had a consolidated training department with all the departments participating. We had a few fire chief changes, and then that just disappeared. And so, a consolidated department would lock in those gains. And the other thing is, whether it's going to cost the citizens a little bit more or a little bit less, I could promise you one or the other, but I can't do that with conviction because there's so many moving pieces. But what I can tell you is that sustainability long-term will be pretty much guaranteed. Just look at the fire districts around you and how their budget, how they weathered their recession, how the, the service level, the, how they maintain their equipment, their buildings, all of that is done, because their sole focus is the fire service. So, my question to you is, do you want a consolidated department? And if you do, then the question that Eric brings forward is, how do you get there? And, and the numbers that the city Bothell brought up on the $220 versus $30, I would like to see us get together and look at those numbers together and, and help determine what the real number is. Because the underlying assumptions are, are core to how you get to those numbers.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah. So, how do we, if we, the first question I'd like to ask is, do we want a consolidated department? And if the answer's no, then we can all stop and go home. If we want to get, get there, then the last thing I'll say is, when you make a decision, understanding your options is core to getting a good decision. And so, to understand what it means to contract for services, to annex to a fire district, or to go to an RFA, I think if you look at those paths and how difficult some are and how, how simplified other ones are, I think, and what the costs are for those, I think it'll be very enlightening for you.
You've seen the majority of the council as of last meeting, certainly in going forward the last two years, the interest to continue to be in conversation. So, I think we're still at the table.
And I think your 7.5 million, you're agreeing to, to contribute the 7.5 million is, is really a strong act of good faith, and I look at it as really core to moving the process forward. And I thank you for that.
Great. I would like to provide an opportunity for our fire chiefs and even public to speak on this matter tonight, since we're all together. Do any of the fire chiefs wish to, to jump in with anything that you heard tonight? Do any of the fire chiefs wish to jump in with anything that you heard tonight, or... Maybe not. No. Is there anyone from public that wished to make a comment? Ms. Gwen? And then we can jump to Councilmember Rayam after that. Ms. Zepa? Is there anyone else who is to speak tonight? No? Okay.
First, I'd like to thank you for televising this meeting and bringing everyone together. And I hope future RFA Planning Committee meetings can be held here. It's a great way for the public to understand the issues, and I appreciate everyone's very frank comments. I was looking at the agenda bill from September 15th, Attachment 3, and if council members or staff wants to look at it, it's page 310. And in it, and I apologize for not using the actual document, but my computer with the printer is not working, so I had to type from information. For $350,000 house, 2,800 square foot house, if I understood this information, this is pretty much as it was presented for that item, it would cost an additional property tax under the RFA of $288.05, and I know you were mentioning 220. And it's rather confusing to me, because I have down here at the very bottom, I wanted to know what the total additional amount for a resident of a $350,000 home, how much additional he would be paying, including the benefit charge? Because when I look up here, the benefit charge is calculated as .292, and it came to $225.78. So that would be my first question, is the total amount, benefit charge, plus what the resident would be paying for the city tax and the RFA tax, does that come to a total of 288.05? And then there was discussion about station location and updating the existing financial. I hope that that includes the new valuations, because City of Bothell, as we all know, have one of the largest projects of redevelopment occurring, and our valuation is going up. We also are, I think, the only large city, so we will be taking more population, and higher valuation is just going to occur unless Woodinville wants to jump up there from a small city to a large city, which I don't think is going to happen. Also, I spoke before the RFA regarding the station location study, and is it based... the need based on current population? Is it based on our current projected population? And does it include our annexation area? I... And do correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that the station location is based on just the current population. And if you're going to be revising the financials, I really hope you include the capital needs based on what is adopted in your comp plan for projected population. Because besides the employee cost, the next highest cost will be your capital needs, and that will determine where. And from a citizen not really looking at everything, but I know that there's been discussion about expanding in the Regional Growth Center in Snohomish County and in our annexations, there's a lot of Snohomish County growth. So I don't want the city to ignore what's occurring in Snohomish County of Bothell when you start talking about what station is needed. And then it's my understanding also that Snow 10 residents will have a tax increase with the RFA, and Snow 10 has been pretty quiet, so I would like to know what the tax increase is. If we're talking about Bothell tax increases, I also want Snow 10, because I'm a firm believer of when you have something sent out to vote to the people, nothing destroys trust in government more than not providing full information so a resident can make an intelligent decision on their vote.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We have a quick answer, and I lost track of time. You got five minutes rather than three. It's your lucky night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for the...
City manager?
So very quickly, the numbers that you report on the screen of 288 is an accurate number.
Okay.
It is based on a $350,000 home. Your citing there, and what the variable charge would be, would be based on the square footages of homes for the fire benefit charge, and so that is reporting on a, at least what we calculate as a 2,800 square foot home at $350,000. The numbers I was reporting on was on a 1,500 or 1,400 square foot home at $350,000. And again, the difference is the amount of the benefit charge that gets applied.
And the total valuation, too?
Well, the total valuation was 350 in both scenarios, yes. But that is the right amount under a $350,000 home, 2,800 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nobody else from public? Great. Does anybody want to... Last thoughts, and Councilmember Sandberg has joined us here. Sorry, Councilmember Rayam, I forgot.
So I just wanted to thank all the commissioners for coming tonight. We appreciate the FaceTime and the opportunity to talk with you. Just to kind of recap over a couple of things. So the North Shore Fire District letter that had some issues and concerns they'd like to have addressed, I wholeheartedly, I think, I'm thinking back over when I read that, but I was right there with you. I wanted to know those answers as well. So moving forward, I really would like to hear more about how those issues are resolved or, you know, at least some sort of response. I don't believe there's been any response by the committee to the North Shore Fire Department from that letter. So the eight-minute response areas, so we're talking about the South End Station. I was looking through the study, and I was just curious, were the jurisdictions such as Kirkland and Snohomish One, were their stations involved in the response time study, or was it just looking internally at our... Because all of our fringes basically had eight-minute response times. Some had more than Bothell's did. And I'm just curious, does anybody know?
My understanding was that it was just the consolidated agencies' response time, and we didn't factor in a... Other Snohomish County stations, Note 7, Kirkland.
Or Redmond.
Yeah.
Just our response times.
Okay. So they would be... They could be and likely are better in the perimeter areas because we get mutual aid from other...
But we can't count on that, because we don't know what that department's going to be doing from day to day. If they're committed, they're committed, and that's... So it's based on our equipment arriving.
Okay. Because it seemed like that'd be good information to know, just because of the fringe areas really seemed undercovered, and it was just... It just popped out at me that if we do have mutual aid and we plan to have, continue to have mutual aid, even as an RFA with other jurisdictions around us, that that would be something to consider, especially when we're looking at capital costs of the regional fire authority.
And there are different kinds of mutual aid. Right now, Bothell and Woodinville and North Shore enjoy closest unit mutual aid, and other agencies have not bought into that, and only... And those response dispatches are calculated differently and would delay response.
Okay. And so I think you did hear from the council, and I wasn't there to vote, but I did agree that, you know, regionalization does make sense. We do have a group of small fire departments, basically, that are kind of remnants of how things were, and a lot of cities and a lot of areas have already consolidated because of the need to... It just makes sense to have the right-sized jurisdiction running a fire department. But the next steps, and I think I've heard this from quite a bit, but I really don't feel like this study gave me the numbers necessary to understand, is this a good thing or not a good thing? And I don't want to say bad things about the consultant, but I just was really undersatisfied with the amount of information that I received in this document. It sounds like whatever the financial committee came up with, that would be a really good thing to look at. There's some stuff in here, but it doesn't sound like the full breadth of what was discussed in that committee is in here. And so for us to be comfortable with, oh, why did we land at a $7.5 million buy-in? Or, you know, how much is this thing really going to cost taxpayers when it's... Everything's said and done? That's something that's really important for me to understand moving forward. The other next step, and I think I've heard this from North Shore Fire Department as well as Woodinville, is that we should be looking... I guess I'm not totally convinced that a regional fire authority model is the right way to consolidate from looking at this study. And so having some financial information about the other options, like what if Bothell contracted with a larger area? What if, you know, North Shore contracted with... We contracted with North Shore to provide all the service in Bothell? Like, just looking at those scenarios, just so we know, okay, this was the best financial consolidation choice was to go with the regional fire authority. I don't feel like I have that information yet. Let's see, I have a couple other things here. It does say, and I looked it up because we were talking about it, it said in page nine in this document, the regional fire authority document, that there would be no staff reductions if we formed an RFA. It did identify there's five positions we don't necessarily need, but they would stay onboard while we're trying to set up the system. So I just wanted to point that out, that's where we got that information from. It's not something that we kind of heard through the rumor mill. It was actually in the document that we received from the Regional Fire Authority Committee. I think that's about it for now. I just... I would really like to know kind of what are the next steps in the process. I think you've heard a pretty strong commitment that we're willing to work with you guys. It's obvious that the size of our jurisdictions isn't optimal. Bothell needs to be involved, obviously, because we're right smack dab in the middle of all of us. So I'm willing to entertain it still. I just need to understand the financial aspects of it a lot more than the information that's been given to us, so.
Commissioner Collins?
The next steps need to be to continue down this long process. We greatly appreciate the Bothell's commitment for the $7.5 million that's out there. I think it was addressed eloquently in the fact that that number was derived from what do we need to make this thing work? And I think with that in hand, we can move forward. But I think to move forward on the RFA process, we also need to move forward on looking at some of the other options that'll get us to a consolidated model. The RFA may turn out to be the perfect way to go, but I think there are other options that we need to address. And unfortunately, with a misunderstanding of some annexation guidelines or...
Statutes.
Or statutes, that portion of the study was left out, and I think we need to go back and look at that while we continue to refine the economics of the RFA model as we look at other options. And I think it has been a long and arduous process, but it's that way because there's some good work going on here amongst this group, and everyone is trying to work towards a fair answer that is going to be net in the long term, the best for everyone that we represent.
Thank you, Roger. And you've all been extremely patient with the hour that we set aside, and we're 24 minutes over, but Councilmember Sandberg did just join us. Do you have anything that you'd like to put on the table, discuss, or...
Well, I apologize for being late, and thank you all for coming here, and I have no idea if the comments I'm going to say are at all in step with what you all have discussed tonight. But I had the opportunity to go back over a lot of the information that we've received so far, letters from the North Shore Fire District, and I went to the October 1 planning committee meeting, and the thing that struck me was that the group is... believes that consolidation in some form is a good path forward, but we all kind of feel, all the agencies kind of feel lukewarm about proceeding because there are so many, you know, issues that we don't necessarily see eye to eye with, are eye to eye on. And I feel like if we're lukewarm now, we're not really ready for the full marriage of what an RFA constitutes. And it almost kind of feels like an arranged marriage with this thought that, well, once you get together, you'll see how good it is together. And so I... So I went back and I looked at a lot, some of the information, and I want to thank the North Shore Fire Department for... They, you know, you guys put things in writing. I mean, you sat down and thought about what was important, and then you articulated it in writing. And in your April 24, 2015 memo, you had some conclusions, and you said that there may be alternative paths or partners for regionalization other than an RFA, including contracts for service, functional consolidation and mergers, which would allow an incremental approach with less risk. And I think that's really a prudent path forward. I don't know if we're ready for the RFA now, but I think that this process has clarified a lot of, I don't know if I want to say deficiencies, but areas of improvement of every agency, and if we were able to work on those individually and yet move forward on some of these other consolidation paths. You know, like the ESCI study talks about how the training is pretty much consistent across all of the groups, because everybody participates in the, is it the East Metro Training Group? So there are already areas of consolidation, but maybe to continue that. And so at the October 1 meeting, I think the representatives were talking about, well, maybe we can have a consultant, you know, pay the consultant to do something more to help this process along. And I just don't feel like I know what that something more is. Because if we want to pay additional money for a consultant to facilitate this process, I think we need to be able to specifically say what we want that consultant to do, and at this point, I don't have that line item list, and so I don't know. Maybe you guys ironed that all out already tonight, but...
We heard that there was going to be an ad hoc committee. If there hasn't already, but Councilmember Asgud, they have a finance committee that's going to be looking at the numbers again, because they're saying in the report they're a bit old. So within 16, 90 days, we'll see something that would be a bit more revised. And that, I think, wouldn't be with a consultant, is that right? That would be a few member committees of the committees that are present here at the table? Okay.
But if, I mean, if there's an opportunity for the different agencies to, like, write contracts for service or... And present that to each other, I mean, putting something down in writing really helps you clarify that thought process, and so I guess I see the wisdom here in this April 24 letter about pursuing other incremental consolidation efforts with a long-term plan of paving the way for some kind of formal consolidation, whether that's an RFA or annexation or whatever.
Great. So came together. Thank you so much. Do you want to make a comment on that?
Not to comment directly on what Councilmember Sandberg said, but I just wanted to add a comment about the hypothetical example that was part of the agenda packet that Sandy Quinn brought up. I actually went through a more detailed analysis of that exact example with our fire chief, and I think there's maybe a slight misunderstanding of the calculations involved with regard to the tax assessment and the fire benefit charge assessment, where actually the hypothetical example figure may be represented a little bit higher than what it actually is. So again, I agree that... I forget who it was who called for maybe taking a relook at some of those numbers and what the components of those numbers are, but I agree that I think that's worthwhile.
Okay. Okay. Well, so the majority of council has put a proposal before you, and I heard that you want to, you're reviewing that, thinking about it, you are potentially setting up an ad hoc committee for 60 to 90 days to kind of financially review and get back to us with what numbers would be, and Councilmember, Councilman Edmond, I think your points are taken. Just kind of a, in a little joke, as far as an arranged marriage, I see it as a mutually interested marriage that may come together with a written understanding that would, dowries would come to the table, is kind of how I saw it. Not romantic. Yes, sir. And then Coughlin. So if you guys are okay continuing, we will. Yes, Mitchell?
I just wanted to speak on behalf of District 10. We're, you know, we've been tied with the City of Bothell because of our contract for services, so we're not, because of the district being split, the City of Bothell annexed us our north end portion over 20-some years ago. So we're kind of stuck in the middle. So for us, obviously, we're listening to what goes on, you know, like you said, we're still tied at this point, still with the city. You know, we have no chief, we have no employees, you know, we pay through our contract. Our citizens in District 10 have been paying less, and, you know, we haven't been once to charge them more for it. We don't have a benefits charge. So yeah, the District 10 residents will pay more with the RFA, but we've tried to keep our costs low at the same time.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner, Coughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that a couple of items here, as Councilmember Ream had mentioned and Councilman Sandberg, there are other, potentially there are other solutions out there. When North Shore issued that letter, the reason why nothing really acted on that afterwards was that we were kind of in that holding pattern, waiting, if you will, for the Bothell City Council to kind of catch up with us. It's not a lick on the City of Bothell, I know the process is a little bit different. We took the summer off, you only took August off. We took the whole summer off. So October 1 was our first meeting in several months, so it took a little bit, it's kind of getting warm and fuzzy and remembering what our missions are there to work on that. And so I know that in part of the process, we will be answering the items on the North Shore letter from April. We have to answer those things. We talked about them in our own commissioners' meeting, and we just kind of put it into a holding pattern until we kind of got some other bigger pieces of the puzzle put together. Those puzzle pieces are now in place, so we can move forward and start to answer those other questions. To the question that the study didn't, wasn't quite filling, it was kind of like a Miller Lite, you're right, but it was really, the bulk of our work was based on the financial end of it, because many RFAs have failed to gain real traction. They can put everything else together, but they can't make it work financially. And so that was the biggest number, the biggest hurdle to overcome. Could we make this work financially? What assumptions do we have to make? Let's work through those things, and can we come up with that answer? And the answer is yes, it can work financially. How we get to it is now the next step problem, and I think that with the City of Bothell's commitment, that now we can go back, and our ad hoc finance committee will not do this in 60 to 90 days, unless we put Commissioner Asgud on it, and I'll gladly let him take my place.
It needs some time off.
Yeah. Talk to the guy behind me.
I'll try to arrange. He can score those eight days off.
Yeah. We will start to work on it, and we will start to work with those numbers to see what better numbers we can come up with, to make sure this thing is as tight as possible, that it makes sense to everybody. And Councilmember Sandberg, we'd already resolved most of this stuff before you walked in. No?
Great. Well, I would certainly like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I think it's been a helpful discussion for me, and I know others at the table. I think collectively, we'd all say we want strong fire departments and districts, and if it's an RFA, that makes us all even better to serve our citizens. I've been overseas in Kenya for the last 10 days, and I know what it's like when there's not those emergency health services with you, and it can be a scary place at a place you don't want to be vulnerable. And what we have here in this region is incredibly strong with Medic One, as Councilmember Agnew knows quite well, and each one of you at this table and behind, I thank you so much for your service to our community and beyond for all that you do. As mayor here, I appreciate the conversation tonight, and think this has been a lively meeting. Look forward to hearing back from the committees and seeing where the next 60 to 90 days lead, if you get the time off. All right? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.